Meeting called to order today is Tuesday, April 10th. It's now 6:00 PM. Town council meeting for a public hearing for the 2019 municipal budget.
Councilman Lachardi?
Here.
Councilman Padula?
Here.
Council Vice President Tamiko?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Absent.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum. Public hearing on proposed fiscal year 19 municipal budget.
All right, we'll start off with the town manager. Do you have any updates, any changes?
Yes, uh, excuse me. Yes, good evening. Again, we've had, you know, some information we received since the budget was presented. When we did the forecasting for the liability insurance with the trust, we took the current rate plus eight percent as we said. The quotes came in and the quotes were less than what we had, I mean, less than what we budgeted. Specifically, our, the workers' comp was a lot less than last year's even premium, let alone with our increase. So Kristin, do you want to mention that?
Sure. So the property and liability is 502,815. I had budgeted 545,000. So it's about forty, about 43,000 less. And also, the workers' compensation, which last year was 463,000, came in this year at 386,626. So it's 16.6% less, which is a significant decrease. And I had budgeted eight percent over what we paid last year, so 509,662. So it's a, it's about a savings of about 165,000, but we're gonna, we need to keep 20,000 in the property and liability as cushion for, you know, deductibles and changes in insurance and stuff like that. So I was gonna propose that we take the 145,577 dollars and move it up to the health line and fund our, the deficit in our Internal Service Fund for health, which is continuing to grow year after year. And it's just a can we're kicking down the road. It would help. The school has given us checks to alleviate their deficit. So I was just thinking that that would be a good use of that budget money.
And Kristin, what was the amount again?
The, the amount I'm suggesting is 145,577. Any questions?
What if the council decided not to move it up to that line?
Then it would come off the budget.
Thank you.
Anything else?
That's it.
All right, so basically, I'm gonna go through page by page. We do have another meeting next week for the council itself. I would suggest tonight, if you have ideas or whatever it is you want to see, then we can discuss it next week also. It also gives you a week to absorb it and do your homework on that specific item. All right, we'll start off with page seven, town manager. Anybody have anything for this?
President Goslin, the meeting is April 24th, not next Tuesday.
I'm sorry, April 23rd. Council meetings are 24th.
Yes, so not next Tuesday.
Nothing's next week because of school vacation. The 23rd is Monday, that's our next meeting.
Six o'clock?
Six o'clock, yep.
And then Tuesday is the regular meeting.
Town manager, any changes in here? Anybody from the public? It is a public hearing. Next page. Page eight, town planner. Any discussion here? Any public discussion? Page nine. Human resources. Any discussion here?
Yes. I just want to throw some things out there. What if, what if we cut the position in half? Make it a part-time position? We have a title administrative assistant?
No.
Clerk?
No. That was removed from the budget altogether.
Right, so it's a full-time position now, working for the town manager, correct?
Yep.
Who, take the person out of it, but take the, just, just gonna say for argument's sake, half, it was half in HR and half in the town manager's, as a town manager's secretary, correct? Now, it's a full-time position for the town manager?
Correct.
Who can also do some work in the HR department, as you see fit. So if people have HR issues, it's a scheduling thing. If people have HR issues, then, and we know there are going to be issues, I don't want to eliminate the position altogether, but that's up to that person to schedule the time.
Well, there are issues that come up that need immediate attention, that can't be scheduled. There could be issues coming up with disciplinary issues, could be issues coming up with, an issue with an employee. So there are many things that, that can't be scheduled. But just in general, to have one full-time person who is in charge of the human resources department, I think is essential. With the types of issues that the town has, the issues that we've had, not having someone who is specifically devoted to that, I think it would be a mistake. And what it would mean is that the town manager would end up being, X amount of time would be devoted to human resource issues, taking away from the other time that the manager has to oversee departments, activities, budgets, all the work that the manager has. Plus coming up, you know, the major activities and tasks coming up are gonna be collective bargaining agreements. All three are expiring. And to have that responsibility and then other responsibilities of HR, I don't see how that can, can work and be, be any way of efficient or functioning effectively.
Ernie, just correct me if I'm wrong, but the benefits coordinator that was here in 2016 wanted to deal with disciplinary issues or anything like that, correct?
Correct.
One thing I sent off to the council, each individual, individually, was, one thing that was said at the last meeting was the benefits coordinator was a lot cheaper than the human resources director. That was kind of an incorrect statement. In 2016, the benefits coordinator with salary, benefits, dental, health and all that was 92,451 dollars. 2018 is 98,123 for the director. Just want, same exact thing, pension, health, dental.
But we're still paying that person to be employed for the town also, right?
Somewhere else, I'm not arguing that. I'm just saying, when-
So, you don't even compare that. Why didn't we think about consolidation? Why didn't the school department want that HR director? Why didn't the school department consolidate with us? I think they wanted to, but I think they didn't like the choices that they had and they reneged on it. My belief. I think that there's not eight hours a day of work for a secretary to work for the town manager. I don't think there's eight hours of work for the secretary to work for the HR director.
Well, there's no secretary and a HR director anymore.
Right. So, when Jim Thomas eliminated that position and then Fred Presley brought it back, what was her name? Libby?
Yep.
She admitted to me that she did two and a half hours worth of work all day for the manager. Two and a half hours. So, you know, I'm not gonna keep reiterating what I got to say. You got your minds made up. There's raises in this that other people don't see, where there's no raises at all, where again, the municipal workers get shit and the rest of them all get, not to knock other departments, but they're hiding raises in this thing and I forgot it at home.
I just want to correct something. First of all, the police department has been awarded 2.75.
I understand that, Dave.
Wait a minute, wait, wait, correct that Angelo, because what you just said to the municipal employees is totally wrong.
Really?
We as a council have said, and I have said it here publicly, that we said if one gets it, they all get it. The police department got it. Now, the town manager made it clear when we first started this budget on the line item under-
Fund balance and general government.
Fund balance. He put in there, to negotiate, he put in the-
To negotiate?
To fire? Yeah, we haven't sat down with them yet Angelo. But he put the money aside for raises. He made it very clear, that's what it's for. So don't sit there and say that municipal got shit, because we haven't-
What did they get last year?
Nobody got anything last year Angelo.
Nobody.
But we need to sit down and talk to them. You can't sit there and say things like that when we haven't even sat down with-
You know what? I'm totally against this budget because it's, I'm not gonna keep reiterating what I did.
Angelo, you've been against every budget since 2012.
That's right, because of the same shit that went on and we're eight million in a hole. So I think I did the right thing by going against that.
But again, you're sitting here throwing out-
You guys did a great job on a budget to put us eight million in a hole.
But you're sitting here throwing out non-factual things, saying they get shit.
They're factual.
We've put money aside Angelo.
Listen. Do your spiel so I can get out of here and make money to pay my taxes. I'm done talking.
Again, if you guys want to cut it down to part-time, get the town-
I want to eliminate the whole thing, that's what I want to do.
That's crazy, you're just regressing at that point.
That's my, I'm not regressing.
If you regress and get rid of HR in this town hall, you're regressing.
Yeah. So back to the HR director. HR position. Page nine. That's, I'd like to make it a part-time position. I'm looking at needs versus necessity. I know it's going to be possibly more work on you, more work on, on your secretary, but I'm looking at, you know, we, we have to start over in some places.
So when you're talking part-time, what, what are you talking, for hours, days, whatever?
That'd be up to the town man, I'm talking 25 hours a week. Schedule will be up to the town manager.
So you're talking about his executive secretary would only be 25 hours?
I'm talking about the HR, the HR director would be 25 hours a week. That would be the position, that's what I'm looking at.
Okay, so the executive assistant would be-
Be a full-time position.
Full-time position. HR, you're saying 25%.
25 hours a week.
25 hours rather. And so, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding what you're offering, presenting. We're talking about the same person or another person, say, from the clerk's office going upstairs?
I'm talking about the position.
For, say, 25 hours.
Position. The HR director position to be cut from full-time to 25 hours a week.
Okay.
And we can ponder that and talk about it next week when the full council's here. Any other areas in that? Human resources? Any public comment? Uh, town council? Anything in there? Any public comment on the town council? Town clerk?
I have a question on the town council, on our, on our piece. The, the agenda management and streaming.
That's this line.
Well, if it's 1500, and this is minimal money, but if, if we're going line by line, 1500 used through January 31st. There's, there's five months left. Do we need 6,400?
Well, we used 61, 69 in 2017. What was that jump?
I think they changed how it was distributed, because it wasn't evenly distributed.
Oh, it was, that's, that's right, I'm sorry. But the way it was, was, you might be able to cut a little bit out of it because planning board, everybody was on that streaming.
Mm-hmm.
Because we would get billed for that. Now, if, we gotta look to see if it's separated on all the others. And we can, we can go back to that. Planning board, pension board, they all were getting, we were getting billed out of the clerk's office to stream.
All right.
So we can go back to that.
And same, same thing with supplies and expenses. You know, we've only used 1500 bucks. Do we need 7,000? I mean, what does that come, come for?
We have a, we went to zero spending, but the supply and expenses for the town council, the way it works is, I use tons of supplies for you and at the end of the year, whatever you need, paper, I supply. So you won't see a big expense, but I, if you want to-
If you need it, if you need it, Mary Ann, then-
Well, if you, I mean, yeah, I, we do use it at the end of the year. I don't, I don't take it out.
When you say use it, what do you-
Every time I buy a ream of paper, you know.
When you say you use it, what do you use it for? Do you move it around to cover other expenses?
If you had a shortage somewhere, but you never have, no. I just wait till the end of the year and then I buy office supplies that I use for you all year long.
All right.
But because, you know, we have our supply line item and as we get lower with town clerk, I look at you and municipal work and other things that we just give all year long to you.
Okay. I, I get you. Thank you.
Town clerk? Board of canvases, it's pretty cut and dry. Legal, it's cut and dry. Probate, again, cut and dry, one person. Any public comment on any of those so far? EMA? Town sergeant? General government? Now, this is where you wanted us to move that 145. That's something to be discussed by the council. That 145,000 savings through insurance, what do we want to do with it? So we can discuss that next week. Just remember that. Finance? More discussions on finance? Any public comment on finance? Tax collector?
Can we just go back to page 17 for one minute?
17?
Kristin, what, where did you want to add that money? Give me the line.
So there is a line to where it says, it's right between dental insurance retirees and health insurance, WRI.
Yeah.
It's just health insurance.
Okay.
So I would, my suggestion would be to put it there to help, which would then get transferred to the internal service.
Okay, thank you.
If we could continue, stay on page 17?
Yeah.
The advertising piece, I asked this a few meetings ago. We have 35,000 budgeted. The, the trend is we, we haven't used 35,000 and especially this year, we've only used 8,300.
It's up a little bit more. I think it's up to, probably up to 115 now, but still trending well.
So I'm thinking-
Can we cut 10 from that?
Yeah.
Cut that down to 25,000? Everybody have any issues with that?
No.
Finance and tax collector, we had nothing on that, all set? Any public comment? Tax assessor? Cut and dry?
Yes. Again, this is just discussion. We have a tax assessor and a tangible tax person. I'm looking at either the tax assessor cut into a part-time position and keep tangible taxes, keep the tangible tax person or fold tangible tax person into tax assessor.
Tax assessor meaning?
Meaning Sal's position at the town?
Yes.
On a revaluation year and everything?
I don't, I don't know enough about the positions to speak to that. I mean, that's something Sal would have to speak to, maybe Ann can speak to it, I don't know.
Me personally, I mean, one thing, one thing I did say specifically was the tax assessor needs to be out in the field a little more. You know, you and I've had that conversation. Not so much Sal, this was prior to even hiring anybody. Out there assessing properties, the permits. There's a lot more than just being in that office.
But there's not a lot being done, except being in that office.
Well, there's so many condos going on, there's so many building developments going on and that's where the tax assessor should be doing their job, getting out and assessing those buildings. Like right now, for instance, I have two condos in Ward 2 that just got complete. It's a 26 condo thing, development. Assessor should be out there assessing those two condos, those four condo units. That's something that should be going on. I, I mean, that's, I don't know-
How, how many hours a week does Tony currently put in or is he?
I don't know.
Does he come in periodically?
He can only work, I believe he can only work 75 days.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I got the wrong, I'm going by the wrong guy. I'm talking about the, which one are you talking about?
There's two positions. Tax assessor and Tony's position is tangible, is correct. And he can only work-
That one's a different.
And the deputy-
He's considered a contractor.
Yeah. He can work 75 days.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I had the wrong position.
So he works up to 75 as needed?
Right.
Okay.
What, does he just show up? Because he's, just, just to show up? That's the question, is he needed?
Ann, do you want to, do you want to comment on this at all? Like, you're in there, no? As far as, you know, what you see, as far as like, you know, is he needed? Not, not needed, I shouldn't say that, that's, that's-
Department head here.
Is the department head here? No. Would you come to the mic? I don't want to put you on the spot, I'm sorry, but-
Kinda.
I know, I'm sorry. But, I mean, you've been there for years. I mean, you, you must see it as necessary.
I must see it.
As far as-
Is it necessary? I'm not gonna comment on that.
Okay, it might be an appropriate position for you in.
I am gonna comment on last year, what was brought as an attention point was the amount of money that was put in the budget for that position, being the part-time position. And it seems as if the same monies are being put in again this year, which last year, it was not agreed upon. I'm sure that you, you don't remember that, but you, I'm sure you do, David.
Yeah, I remember a little discussion about this. The, well, that's the thing, we moved a, a floater into your department.
That's under a different category.
No, I'm saying, we, what we, in the past two years, we put a floater in, we've replaced the tax assessor and then I know a tangible tax assessor.
The floater is a half-day position. It's a half-day in my office, a half-day in building. Those wages are under general wages?
So if, and again, I know this has been brought to my attention before and I think we talked about it last year. You're right, there, there's a certain dollar amount budgeted. Does, do we need him here all the time just to spend that money? Or is it, do we, does he need to be here less, is the question? You know, he's a contractor, you're right, and does he just come in, how I say this nicely, does he just come and suck every dollar out of that account because he's here? You know, that's, that's a question, that's a question for the department head. It's unfair to put you on the spot because-
It's very unfair.
I apologize.
But-
Is it the same pay that they've been getting through the years?
He gets a flat amount per day.
Is he in here?
Is this year more than last year?
What is budgeted this year for the department is the same amount that was budgeted last year, but was not agreed upon last year because we brought it to the attention. They were trying to put in for a $20 per day raise last year.
Did they receive that $20 per day raise?
No, they did not. And it's under professional services.
He did put in for that raise again this year and we cut it.
Okay, but that, but it's, if you look on the department, that 12,042-
Yeah, there's some other things in that contracting.
Correct, that is.
Besides him.
Right, that is for Axiom and it's also for LexisNexis.
Yeah.
Right. So that figure of 12,000-
But to the, to the right managers, it's reduced.
Correct, yeah. But the department includes, those figures for the department is the 180 per day, which is the raise, plus the 300 for the Axiom, plus the 42, 44 for the LexisNexis.
Right.
Thank you, man, appreciate it.
Any other comment on that? We'll have to talk to, the town manager can reach out to Sal-
I will.
And get his opinion on that. Board assessment review, that should be fairly easy. Police department? Any comment from the council? Any public comment? Yeah? Is this the animal shelter stuff that we went over last week?
It is, or do you want me to wait till the end?
No, if you want, go ahead.
Oh, okay. First of all, I do appreciate that, I don't want to belabor a drop in the bucket of your 97 million dollar budget, but, oh, I, I did make copies here. Fewer pages.
Just the videos here from last time.
But to better understand, here's what I think I understand about the financial status of the shelter. And I've outlined it as revenue sources, the licensing fees estimated at 81,900, 8,190 dollars go into the town general fund, adoption fees, to turn-in fees, impound fees and some fines. And that goes back to page six of the budget that we talked last, that you took it under advisement, I presume, to budget $3,000 in the dog pound collection line item, since it does generate revenue. Animals shelter supplies budgeted at $8,000, that's a line item in the police department.
Yep.
Spay neuter surcharge estimated at 1170 is a dedicated spay neuter fund and donations presumably go into the special dog pound fund number 808. And then you talked last week about a possible reallocation of $15,000 budgeted for 2017, 18, but not expended. That might be re-appropriated for fence, fencing at the shelter.
Correct, that could be on the next council agenda, it will be.
Okay, and then the capital budget, proposed repairs at the shelter were 70% of the 30,000, which would be 21,000 for revenues. And then on the next page, expenses. Supplies, repairs, utilities, laundry and pest control are under animal shelter supplies and that's a line item in the police department budget. Veterinary care and laundry, and this is new since November 7th of 2017, having withdrawals from the special dog pound fund. And I also, when I took a second look at those items, there were also some repairs and supplies that were paid out of that account. And then the spay, spay neuter, the expenses for that will be taken out of the dedicated spay neuter fund. I just wanted to give you my thoughts for going forward and this is based on absolutely no accounting background, but just trying to apply common sense to put the shelter on a solid footing for the foreseeable future. My first, you know, suggestion, because the dog pound collections have not been previously budgeted, but income has been coming in, that that be allocated to the animal supplies, animal shelter supplies, increasing it from 8,000 to approximately 11,000. The special dog pound fund, it seems from backup information that finance director Kristin Benoit provided to me that this fund was established in 2014, 15 with the money primarily from the Belize Subaru of 9,185 dollars and I guess other donations of 443 dollars. And that year, it totaled 9,628 dollars at the end of the year. This suggests to me that this fund was for, had a designated purpose and was set aside. And then from 2015 through 17, it grew somehow to 15,964. Whether that was from other donations, 6,336 dollars seems like an awful lot in two years. So it seems more likely to me that maybe the dog pound collections were also deposited there. I don't know. As I mentioned before, since 11/7, this fund has paid out veterinary care, laundry, some repairs and supplies. My suggestion is that if the original purpose for this fund can be identified or can't be identified, that it be dedicated exclusively to veterinary care and to take all of the expenses for laundry and minor repairs and supplies from the dog pound collections slash animal shelter supplies. And I'll, I'll add this, I'll be back when the town is on a better financial footing to capture the licensing fees for the animal shelter. But I'll put that off for now, because I don't want to press my luck. And the last thing I have to say is that I would be remiss if I didn't note of Chief McGarrett's comments, that there is seniority and seniority has its privileges. As I commented then, I'm not sure how much of a privilege it is- um, I'm not sure how much of a privilege it is to do state D E M and town reports, but I implore you to give the senior animal control officer the discretion to make decisions and manage the shelter's budget as provided by town ordinance, being accountable to the chief of police and the town council.
And Mrs. Young, I think, I think we discussed that last time. That is something that's in the contract, and that's something that would have to be negotiated during the next renegotiations.
When does that occur?
Next, next year, early next year, probably within the next six to eight months.
Oh, good.
Coming in, uh, six to eight months? Even earlier?
Yes, uh, you know, generally, in late fall, uh, around by, by December or in January, uh, uh, yes. Sometimes a little earlier, so it'll be, it'll be soon, six to eight months, it's a good, good timeframe.
Thank you.
I, I'll just say one other thing about that, having been a union member for thirty-two years. When there are things in a contract that both sides recognize might need to be negotiated, there are things like memoranda of understanding, you know, different ways that you can do something a little quicker than waiting for the next negotiation. And the other thing, and I, I really didn't wanna bring it up, and I guess I'm going to, is that last, um, week, and my math is, I can't attest to it, but last week, um, Chief McGarrett said that, uh, in his figures, the part-time animal control officer was not budgeted. I added up, added up by hand the civilian positions in the police department, and money for that position is still in it.
It's still in there. We discussed it, yes, the chief and I discussed it, uh, two days later, three days later, to discuss another matter, and, and we did realize it was in there, he did realize. So, thank you for bringing that up, thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you, Mary.
So at this point, do we wanna remove that at least? 'Cause the part timer's not there, there's no part timer there. Do we have any issues with that?
No, just like, it's like many of the decisions you make, sometimes you may wanna reallocate funds to something else. Whatever that may be, some of the discussions have, you know, have been earlier about different things, but yeah, definitely that should come out.
How much are we talking about here in this one?
Fourteen thousand something, right? She'll give you the exact, she'll give you the exact figure.
Is that the right number?
It is thirteen thousand four thirty-five.
Thirteen thousand four thirty-five?
Correct.
Council can discuss what they wanna do with that next week? And, oh.
Whatever you want.
Glad to see you're involved. Fire?
I'll be involved at the end.
Any discussion about fire?
I don't waste my time.
Department of Public Works? Any comment on Pub, Public Works? Come on, I'll just state your name for the record.
How's it going, Dave? Jared Masachi. Uh, I work at the Public Works, and I just wanna talk a little bit about, uh, you know, the privatization with, uh, Mega and everything else. You know, uh, have you guys thought about cutting some, with the bulk pickup?
So Fred's supposed to get us some numbers for that, he did say he had the numbers ready. Um, that's a discussion we are gonna bring up next week.
Okay.
Possibly, if it's a savings, possibly bring it back, bulk pickup.
You know, also, we have a dumpster in the backyard, gets taken about two, three times a month. That's another savings right there.
Yep.
You know, and, maybe thinking about taking it back, you know, garbage, getting it back to us. I know we're capable of doing it. You know, we can lease these trucks.
Garbage at this point, we're, we're still in a contract, but it is something that we have talked about. We wanna see if there is a savings. Um, we've also talked, you know, like I said, slow, slowly right now, bulk pickup. You know, if there's something else, I would bring that to Fred, and Fred needs to have that to us by next week, and that's when we'll make the ultimate decision. Um, and then we also need to look at what type of contract we're in with Mega, as far as bulk pickup. If we can break off that, that'd be something that we're looking at.
All right.
Again, we just wanna see the numbers and see what it compares to. Um, one of the reasons, and I know some of you weren't here when we talked about it, was, um, we think the town would be cleaner with our own employees maintaining that portion of it especially. If somebody decides to throw mattresses out or whatever, and, and trust me, guys and girls, I knew there was hot burn when we privatized, so when it came time to where somebody threw mattresses on the street or whatever, you know, there was, there's hot burn, they said, let Mega go get it.
I think there still is, so.
And we, well, we wanna look, see, clean up the town and putting an acid on that, and hopefully we can save some money also, and keep the town cleaner.
Exactly. Thank you.
Thank you. Town engineer? Let's just, services. Street lighting? Building official? With everything going on, a lot of development lately, we gotta make sure we get this office staff properly. However, I know we have people out on F M L A, and, um, we have a position that we now having open, and applications are coming in, that's closing this week?
Uh, closed last Friday, the sixth.
Friday, okay. And when do we do interviews on that?
Uh, reviewing and, uh, you know, the candidates, uh, probably, uh, within a, oh, for a few weeks, a week or two.
Just one, one comment. Uh, not staff properly, properly staffed, with competent help, then they can handle it. I know how it worked last year, with only Joe Argenti and one other person, and everything was done correctly. So, maybe we'll, we're going in the wrong direction to put more money into that department, where if we had qualified people working in that department, they could do their job. That's just my comment.
I, I agree with you. Hundred percent, for the simple reason, since, before you were any, when, when we just, when we just started on the council in December of sixteen, I don't think we've had a time where we had a full complement of staff in the building officials office. And that's where a lot of the issues came up, as far as um, trash and abandoned houses. And, uh, I, I get to give a lot of credit to, to the clerk in that office, I know we, we're not allowed to mention names, so, but I, she's, she's really holding the office together. And, um, if, she, she should be the focal point there. And we need to build around that.
Just to clarify, and, you know, some of you weren't here last time I made a statement. We are, we can say names, but I've asked the council to refrain, and I've used names, I've asked the council to refrain from using names and stick to positions out of professionalism for the employees. I, I agree wholeheartedly with both of you on this, this is gonna be a department that we can't be missing things, we need to make sure, we got a lot of development, we got a lot of condos going up. We have buildings coming down, um, you know, we have stores going in, some restaurants come, trying to come in. You know, we wanna make sure these buildings are inspected properly and, you know, on a timely manner.
We also need a building official that puts on his phone twenty-four hours a day, and is called in and not an add-on. So, I'll stop at that.
Thank you. Zoning? Should be pretty cut and dry. Senior center's cut and dry. Housing board is cut and dry. Library, I have a note in here about fifty thousand dollars that he requested, but it was cut. Anybody have any consideration there?
I, I would like to see them get some sort of raise. I mean, obviously fifty thousand is too much, I'm just saying, just, just
I'm not, I'm not laughing.
Based on, just based on uh, the qualifications of the people who are currently there. If you look at, you know, other cities and towns, where, you know, where the numbers actually fall in terms of what the employees are being paid, works, we're, we're very low, um, and it is such a valuable resource. So my personal opinion is, maybe, maybe they don't buy fifty thousand, but maybe we could make a consideration.
Well, out of that fifty, it was also to keep it open long.
Well, that was to increase the hours, correct? They wanted to get another four hours, is that right?
Four hours a week. So that's, that's, that's what the difference was. So we can discuss that next week, once again? Any public comment on that? Just come out to the microphone, then you can come up next.
Hi, I'm Tom O'Donnell, Director of the Library. I wasn't going to say anything, uh, tonight, and I appreciate the council considering this very much. But a couple of things were mentioned earlier, and, um, I was thinking, given that money has been set aside for the, uh, anticipated raises for the municipal workers.
Not so much on the library, though. We haven't put nothing aside on that, that was for police, fire, and municipal.
Okay. And the, uh, savings that has been found in the budget, given the, uh, uh, savings from the insurance, liability insurance, I was wondering if part of that might be used, uh, for the library. That way, it's not an increase in the budget, but it's money being used from the savings. And I just wanted to make something clear that I don't feel I made clear during my budget presentation, which is, uh, the library workers are playing catch-up. Because a three percent raise on thirty-one thousand dollars is just thirty-two thousand dollars. Eventually, we would like to align ourselves with raises given in the town, with municipal wo- workers, and align ourselves with those. But in order for those two and a half, three percent raises to mean anything, we need to get up to a certain level. And, uh, it would be helpful if we don't get the fifty thousand to at least get thirty thousand. We'd be happy with that.
And I think you said it clearly in your, uh, presentation, that these are individuals with master degrees.
Yes.
And making thirty thousand dollars a year. You, you did make that very clear to us last year in this year.
Okay, thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
And I think someone else wanted to say something.
Yeah, he's right here.
Nicholas DiLorenzo? I actually work for the, the town D P W as well. I didn't mean to bring back into the, um, like, you guys had talked about the, the raises and stuff a little while ago, I just wanted to know if I could just hear more, like, what is involved in, like, seeing some kind of raise for us as well, since, you know, I mean, I know, you just brought that up, and that's the final.
So, at the be, at the very beginning, our very, uh, very beginning of our budget session, season, the town manager, um, we were in, um, court basically with the police department. And, we as a council have always said, not just this council, previous councils said, if nobody gets it, then nobody gets it, and if one doesn't get it, they're all not getting it.
Yep.
Well, this time around, the police department is getting a raise. And, I have said publicly that if one gets it, they all get it. It's not fair that only one department gets a raise. And, the town manager did put money aside to look at fire, he has negotiated with fire, um, because they have arbitration rights. Unfortunately, what I found out is, you don't. But I still disagree, and, and by no means, the town manager says, we don't wanna give you a raise, but the council itself doesn't have to give a raise, because you don't have arbitration rights, so you can't take us to court on it. But, I still disagree with that wholeheartedly. I personally say, if we're giving police and fire a raise, the municipal should get a raise.
Yeah.
And you're hearing it from me, I wholeheartedly believe that. The only problem is, um, if this budget gets voted down, then what?
Yeah.
That's the only concern.
I just wanted to see, like, do people.
Then we gotta do our job.
Yeah, I just wonder, like, do people, like, like, do they not feel like we don't, like, we don't deserve a raise? I feel like it's been long enough, you know?
I, I feel each and every one of you deserve a raise.
I agree, that's all, I just wanted to know, 'cause it's been a long time, and I mean, the, the minimum wage has gone up multiple times, the cost of living is going up, and, I mean, spreading what we make, you know, throughout the week is.
Doesn't work.
No, it doesn't, doesn't work, and I love my job, I love working here, and like, just like you guys are saying about the trash, I would love if we could personally make this town cleaner like ourselves, because we would do a way better job than somebody else that doesn't care about it, we actually live here, we wanna see it look good. And, you know, we're definitely, uh, hungry for the money, that's for sure.
Nick, I was the only councilman that voted no to privatize.
I remember. I remember.
Because of this reason.
Yep.
So, just like I said, the five-year plan, no good.
Yeah. 'Cause you guys signed a.
I'm not gonna say anything else.
We signed another contract, right? This is our second contract with them now, with the recycling, as far as recycling, I know trash, they've had it for a while.
Trash then came into recycling, we took over recycling also.
Okay.
But that was also, at least the two, the bins and everything else, that was part of the plan.
How much longer do we have until we can, like, renegotiate, three years?
Well, not negotiate, but we have three years left on the contract.
Okay.
A little under, a little under three.
Okay, I'll, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Any other questions on the library?
Well, back, back to that, could, just a question for clarification. Just because we have three years on the contract, doesn't mean we can sit with them and figure out what we can do to get out of this. Correct?
Well, you have to look at.
'Cause three years is a long time, I, no, I know that there may, most likely an expense involved, but, three years is a long time.
Also, now you have to think about garbage trucks.
Yes, there's a lot to come into play with this.
And again, we're gonna talk about it in the contract.
Yep, it's worth investigating, though.
Parks? Any questions on here? Any public comment on parks? Debt service? That's just basically all our bonds and whatever else? Capital? Any questions on capital?
For capital, when we, um, last time we talked about, uh, possibly taking the money from the recreation fund for the appreciation day, and moving that to fixing, at least, uh, moving towards, uh, the fence at the dog, at the animal shelter. That would affect, if we're able to utilize that money now, that would affect that capital for this budget coming up.
Correct.
So, because our next budget is the twenty-third, uh, our next meeting on this is the twenty-third, the next council meeting is the twenty-fourth.
True, so we're actually talking about the day after.
Yes, yes.
Right. It's a good point.
So I, I would like to take money out of that capital.
From last, from this year.
From this current, no, from this budget that we're working on.
I think we can make that decision today, 'cause Councilor Messier felt the same exactly.
And I comply with that, too.
So that would be taking fifteen thousand dollars out of that. So, and, um, last thing, it, it kinda reflects some of this budget across the board, is, I, I really still would like to see a facility manager at the civic center coming out of the enterprise fund, which would affect some of the expenses in this current, in this budget that we're looking at right here. And I know, I spoke with, with the town manager about this, and I mean, of course, it's not as simple as it, as it should be. But, again, we could have some savings here, we could have, I would say some, a presence over there to handle some of the issues that are, that are going on. And, they would report directly to the town manager. I know I'm being a little bit vague with this, but, because we're looking at two different types of budgets, we're looking at an operating budget, and we're also looking at a, an enterprise fund. And I don't have the figures for the enterprise fund in front of me. So, I can't give exact figures. But I know we could have a savings here, and a savings over there, to make up a salary for the facility manager. So again, but it seems like we're doing everything, we're putting this first, and we really can't introduce that until we talk about the civic center budget, which is the enterprise fund, which we don't get until June, which makes absolutely no sense to me. So, does anybody have any thoughts on it?
Just the facility manager for that one, those two buildings?
No, I'm talking for the animal shelter at all, I mean, chief doesn't want it. You know, he's got enough to do, he's running a police station. Facility manager will run that facility. Nobody would lose any, any jobs, but they would have that, that leadership would be from that person, rather than the chief, unless the chief, you don't want it, right?
And I certainly think that there should be a management.
Not to put you on the spot, but I don't wanna go through all this, if you, if that's something that you desperately wanna keep.
It doesn't matter if he wants it, can you save us money?
Correct.
I mean, you're putting him on the spot.
I don't mind being on the spot, it's okay.
He's got a gun, he's.
I, I've mentioned this before, we've mentioned it when we've had the meetings, when the issues were going on, when, uh, way back. And, there should be, in my opinion, yes, it should be, some type of manager should be down there. I mean, our policy states we are the liaison to the animal shelter.
See, I'm not looking for a liaison, I'm looking for a person.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, we're in control. No, no. That's what I'm saying. We're not their manager. We're their liaison. They have a problem. They come to us.
They have to write citations.
They come and they drop their money off to our records clerk, which goes to the town, to the town clerk's office, which goes to finance.
See, I'd like to change, I'd like to-
So that's, that's my opinion.
I'd like to change all that. Where you, you're basically, just, if, if I need you, as, as a, or if any civilian out here needs you, we call you.
Yes, just like if we were assisting the building officials, or-
Exactly.
Highway, if highway had an issue, they needed the police, they'd call us. We'd go assist them. Same thing with the ACO. That's, that's how most of them run around the state. They do have, the police department is there to assist them with any, maybe tickets they have to write off. There's an unruly citizen or some type of animal that they, they can't control or whatever. That's-
Chief, let me ask you a question. So, the ACO has the ability to write a citation, correct?
Correct.
Does it have to be under the auspices of the police department to be able to do that? Is there a certain power in that?
No, they, they can write, no.
Or can they still do it even if-
So if they had a violation, they could write, they could write it. They wouldn't need to call us to go write a violation for them. If they had an unruly person, we'd go assist them. If it was something that reached a higher level, where, you know, we, we would go assist them, absolutely. And we'd still do that if they had a facilities manager. That would still be our function, to work with them, just like we'd work with any other department. I know Mrs. Young did a very nice presentation, and in my presentation that I put, I clearly had listed two ACOS, but the past record showed that that money was in there for the part-time ACO. I mean, there's some money maybe that you may want to transfer to that type of person to be a facilities manager. It's, it was in last year's budget. Now it, it's showing it's in this year's. If you're gonna cut it, you cut it. But there's your opportunity. There's that fourteen, however the, the number was, that you may be able-
We could cut it.
To use that, transfer that to-
We could cut it out of here, and it'll come out of the enterprise fund, which we're making revenue.
Facilities manager.
We have revenue from the Civic Cent, from the fieldhouse and the ice rink. How much, I, I don't know off the top of my head.
I actually have all that in front of me.
But that money is there. Maybe you can transfer it towards that idea you have.
So as of right now, Fieldhouse revenue is sixty-one thousand, six sixty-one. In fiscal year sixteen, the Civic Center ran a hundred ninety-four thousand dollar deficit. In seventeen, after we put a coordinator in there, plus eleven thousand. And that, right, right now, and that includes, since we took it over in seventeen, that includes a Civic Center supervisor, a Civic Center maintenance person, some part-timers, a secretary, and an event coordinator. So it looks like nine positions total with, with part-time. And right now, let's see. Revenue right now, sixty-nine thousand. Still have, actually, summer program revenue, twenty-two thou, almost twenty-three thousand. Advertising revenue, fifty-five hundred. Total revenue this year was ninety-seven thousand, nine seventy. And you're now, as far as profit, you still also have the next quarter to bill for. So it should be in the black this year.
Do you have this information?
I request this information through email, through Kristen, and through Laurie. I got this all this week, all the stuff I was working on. One of the reasons why I was working on this was what was said to me last week, was get rid of everybody who was high and not in the five-year plan. So I went ahead and got a list of everybody who was in the five-year plan, what their job responsibilities, the revenue they bring in. And I, I went ahead and requested this all myself, just I had nothing to do with anybody else. It's just stuff I'm doing my homework on.
Can you tell me why you're on that subject? How we spent six million dollars? Where that money went? Can you break that down? Did you ask for that information? I did. Did I get it? No.
How'd you not get it? You got it in every audit, Angelo. You keep saying that, you never got it.
Listen, the audit, just like the audit said, the sewer plants are a million dollars in the red. That's how good that audit was. But then they corrected it, that it wasn't. Just like they said we had a savings in our electric with the windmills, which we have a deficit. I mean, come on, people. You know, I can't get answers. I'm a goddamn councilman over here representing my ward and the citizens of this town. And I yet, all I keep hearing is, we have to move forward. How do you move forward without knowing how we went in the red? Six, maybe seven, maybe eight million dollars. It's a stone throw. Nobody knows. We have three million dollars in sewer enterprise fund money that we're using in this town for daily operations. How Coventry, Warwick, and Cranston, or West Greenwich does not sue us? I have no clue. I, I mean, we have a Times here. They put it in the paper. Not one word about it. We're talking about big money. If there's an emergency with the sewer department, you're talking four, five million dollars. Where's the money? What do we do? I know. Crickets.
It's not there.
Bet your life it's not there.
We've talked about this so much over the past year. I mean-
I got no answers. I want it in writing. I want to know where six million went to the penny, or eight million. We still don't know how much we're in a deficit. We still don't know how much we're saving on them wind turbines. Eighteen million dollars the taxpayers voted. Where is the savings? We're paying our debt service. How much? How much are we getting from debt, debt service? How much are we getting in, in actual savings?
Well, last year in August was our first full year, and unfortunately, he's not here, but John Semino sat here and said what our-
Listen, I don't care what John Semino said. You listened to John Semino before. You got in trouble, didn't you?
Angelo, he came up here and said point-blank what the wind turbines were making and not making, and it was in the black. It was our first-
And now we're in the red. He said that the five-year plan worked, too. Him and Fred Presley, with six million in the hole. So I guess you can really take their advice on something. And you still don't admit it. I'm done. Vote the budget down, because you're gonna get screwed again.
Vote the budget down and-
Well, then, these guys gotta do their jobs.
Great leadership.
You bet your life it's great leadership. Had you guys leading my businesses, I would have been broke forty years ago.
Yep.
I'm not gonna argue.
Any other comments on the budget?
Can we go back to capital? I want to talk, actually, to the fire chief. Can you, can you talk a little further, chief, about the server? And you had mentioned something about radios.
Yes, actually, I was gonna come up and speak about the, no, Siri, I don't want to do that. Yeah. First, I was gonna get up and speak about what the department head's figure is on here. It says forty-four thousand, three hundred, for clarification and accuracy. I would hope that we can-
What page, chief? Where I am?
On the capital.
On the actual capital page?
Yes.
Thank you.
As I said in our workshop, that there was a mistake of twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars that was not given to Kristen, or was. There was a couple of drafts, and it didn't, it did not get in here originally for two radios. And my request should reflect sixty thousand, six hundred dollars. Then the manager went over, over the budget. He made a cut of sixty-five hundred dollars for a thermal imaging camera. So that really doesn't really reflect what my request was originally. And whatever happens next week, your decision of what you keep in, what you take out, is, is totally up to the council.
You're talking about the add-on, right?
Yeah, there, there should have been the twelve thousand, eight hundred dollars for the two radios. We had cut that down to two. It's part of our replenishment of taking all radios out of service and not doing it all at once, a little at a time. And that's part of our, our five-year plan, those radios that originally did not get in here. You said you had a question?
Well, can you elaborate more on these radios and what they're replacing and why they, they need to replace right now? I mean, is it just a matter of just trying to, like, stay ahead, or is it a matter of, is it critical?
No, it, it's replacing what's needed.
Are these the repeaters, or is this-
No, these are, these are actual radios. Right, right now, we, our department did not go to eight hundred megahertz radios like most other cities and towns have done. So our new radios will be a dual-band. John Patello really can speak on this better than I can. But little by little, we're changing the old ones. Plus, they cannot be repaired anymore. Motorola's the only game in town, as far as purchasing these radios. And it's just, can we get by? I'm sure, but it's not advised. It's not advised, because then if we need to buy a radio during the course of the year, we don't have the money for it. And the server for the security and the upgrades that we've had over the years, I believe John said our server's seven years old. It's time to change that out before it crashes. And that was advised by our, the tech guys.
Extremely old for technology.
Yes. Other than that, and I said, as I said in the workshop, this is the lowest amount of money I have requested in capital budget since I've been here. It's just need. It's needs. It's not wants. It's needs. Any other questions?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
We'll take it into consideration for next week. Any other public comment? Mrs. Young?
I'm a little concerned on the capital budget about the suggestion that fifteen thousand could be just taken out of that because the fencing might be covered elsewhere. There were other structural needs at the animal shelter. The cat cages need to be replaced. They're not compliant with state regulations. The guillotine doors are due for replacement. There's holes in the wall. I mean, there's a lot of stuff that needs to be done. So, and I'm not just talking about fencing. You know, if you're gonna make a reduction there, I would ask you to consider it at least being proportional with the range, you know, the way we're speaking before about seventy, thirty. The other concern I have, and I, you know, maybe I've missed a few pages, because I'm not here often. But I thought that Councilman Lichardi introduced the concept of a facilities manager at your very first meeting about the budget.
Yes.
Has that gotten any definition? I know you mentioned that it would be, include the ice rink, the fieldhouse, parks and recreation, and the animal shelter.
Yes.
And what would that person do?
They would be in charge of overseeing all the facilities. Meaning, I mean, that's something we, that would have to be discussed, but I'm looking at, they're in charge. If, they're in charge of presenting the budget for all facilities. They're in charge of, in, in the hierarchy, they'll have people underneath them, the same people that are there now, doing the work. And if they want to, depending on who is doing the scheduling, I mean, they can, what they say goes, basically. If that makes, if that makes sense.
Right, right now, it's on-
I, I think, wait, let me just say, is your concern that the SOR would lose, SRO, excuse me, the SOR would lose the ability to-
ACO?
ACO. I meant ACO. SRO, I know, for, for schools, I'm sorry. Are you concerned that a, a manager wouldn't have the qualifications to properly run the, the shelter?
Uh, yeah, that would be part of it, yeah.
Because I, I think, I think-
My, my concept-
I'm looking for an administrative position, basically, with this. And as far as the people that are running the shelter, would still be running the shelter.
Sure.
Duties may change depending on, I mean, we're getting way too advanced for this right now.
Okay.
But, again, the Parks and Rec foreman would still handle his job as Parks and Rec. The people in the, in the fieldhouse would still be doing, would still be working in the fieldhouse. That may change a little bit.
A knowledgeable ACO would still run the daily operations of the shelter.
I'm not looking to reinvent the wheel here. I'm just looking to make, to get a person there that, as a go-to person, where if there's an issue, you're talking to one person, and not three or four different people who don't know what's going on.
Yeah, that needs some thought.
The only, for budgetary reasons, Councilman, what's your suggested salary?
I would say sixty thousand. But you're talking managing all the facilities.
In what way? Are you talking about if the roof leaks, they deal with that?
The employees have a department head to go to when there's issues or concerns.
And they don't now, at those-
They do, but it's one per, right now, the dog officers go either to the police department or Public Works. Same thing with Civic Center, and same thing with Parks and Rec. So you're asking a department head to run DPW, the Civics, Parks and Rec, the DP, Civic Center, ice rink. And if you left it in place and took it out of the police department, you'd ask them also to be looking over the dog, the animal shelter.
And it's too much.
It's too much for one person.
Well, we'd have to make up the difference to fund that position, that's all.
Right.
And if we can't do that, we can't do it. That's why it's, it's important to have the enterprise fund money in front of me, so.
To just sum clear, so you're saying that the fieldhouse and ice rink and parks and recre, no, not parks and recreation are presently under the Department of Public Works?
Yes. Yes.
Well, that's interesting. Okay. But, but you do have a-
We have a building supervisor up at the ice rink. But they don't have, like, it's not an administrative position where they can direct and, I can't say direct, but discipline or deal with any major issues or whatever. They still have to go to DPW to get the, the permission for those things, and not directly to the town manager. So that's what Jay, Councilman Lichardi's looking for, is somebody that they have to go to and go directly, report directly to the manager. That's what he's looking for.
If you're looking to save a few dollars, I don't think the time is right for that. My opinion. Thank you.
If I may, just on capital, I know we've cut our capital as well quite a bit. And I know the fire department did extremely cut theirs well down, a lot as well. But just some of the necessity items, we spoke about the radios. If I can just elaborate slightly, what happens is, we kind of purchased our radios in the beginning. Everyone was able to get a radio. And now we, we made up a ten-year plan roughly four years ago, four to five years ago, to purchase two or three at a time, as opposed to coming to you folks and saying, hey, we need a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to buy everyone a radio. So the fire department was similar, because we deal with their communications people as well. And obviously, now, we've had our radios for several years. As the chief said, the parts aren't available, so when we buy new ones, they're the upgraded ones. The old ones, they're able to take them and try to use parts to replace some of the other ones to keep us moving forward. But obviously, in our profession, fire profession, that's our lifeline. So radio is our, our paramount for our daily operations.
Thank you. Any other public comment? That's the end of our public here. Little motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Say. Call in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night. We'll see you next week. Well, twenty-third.
Tonight midnight.
Monday night, six.
Tonight at midnight, Bert, be back here.